Our session. So, welcome back in today's Sunday's session. Early morning Sundays, you get one day to sleep but that day also I wake you up early to sit in this class in front of me and get bored for one hour, right? Anyways, we'll be starting our session. So today I thought that we'll not go further in our verses of Gita. We have already covered up to nineteen slokas. So in next week, we'll be covering six more slokas. But today I have one special class for you all. A very special topic, special practical tips for you. Some, I'll be sharing those practical tips towards the end, which if you can incorporate in your lifestyle, daily routine, then it can benefit you a lot. But before that, we'll be starting our special lecture today, which is on the importance of hearing. We are hearing daily, we are hearing Bhagavad Gita on the weekends, right? But what is the importance of hearing? Why should I hear? Yes, what is the importance of this hearing of Bhagavad Gita? So we'll discuss today on the importance of hearing and then towards the end some practical points. So let's start. So, you know, as the sun rises and as the sun sets, with every sunrise and with every sunset, he has sipped, the sun has sipped into the glass of our life. Just like every one of you have one cup and that cup is your life. Sahir has one cup, Mahir has one cup, Devin has one cup, Shre has one cup. And all of, all the beings in this world have their own cups, their cup of life. And with every sunrise and with every sunset, what does the sun do? He sips in, he sips in with a straw from every cup. Do you agree or not? That the sun has multiple straws in multiple cups and every single day, one day of our life reduces, yes or yes? Yes, every single day, every single sunrise and every single sunset, one day gone. We say, oh wow, now Devin has turned eighteen, Sahir will turn thirteen, Mahir will turn, I don't know, I don't know. But that means, does that mean that your time span in your life has increased or the time span of your life has decreased? It has decreased because it is fixed. If Sahir will live seventy years, Mahir will live seventy-five years, Devin will live sixty, etc. This time span is fixed. Now, one birthday, happy birthday to you, that means one step closer to death. Not, not only birthday, every single day, as the sun rises and as the sun sets, what does the sun do? He sips in from every cup, yes? So who tells us this? So in Shrimal Bhagavatam, this is, this has been written and Bhagavatam cannot lie. Gita, that cannot lie. It is said that Bhagavatam and Gita are our best friends. Why? Do you know why? Because that friend will never lie to you. That friend will never lie to you. And in that, that friend tell us, that friend tells us, ayu harati. Ayu harati means that with every sunrise and sunset, ayu means age harati. Har leta, it, it takes away one day of your life. But except for one person, sun sips in from the cup of everyone. One day of everyone's life, except for one person. Can you guess who that person will be? Not Krishna. Not Krishna because he is above. In this mortal world, I am talking about. He is the controller of the sun, what will the sun do of Krishna, I'm not talking about Krishna. In this mortal world. Except for one kind of people, not one person, one kind of people.
Our souls.
Yes, but the sun can never sip the life from our soul because the soul is eternal. But when we talk about our life, then we talk about the duration, we are in this body, we have this body with the soul. So, those people, hear it carefully. Those people who are engaged in hearing and speaking about the Bhagavad Gita and about Krishna, the sun cannot sip their life. Does that mean they will not die? Does that, that, does that mean that with every, every sunrise and sunset, they will grow younger and not older? Then what does this mean? This means that the sun cannot steal, hear it carefully, the sun cannot steal from him, from the devotees who are engaged in hearing and speaking Gita because the devotees are engaged in hearing about someone who is a greater thief. Who is the greater thief? Sun is the thief who is stealing everyone's life from everyone's cup. But he cannot steal the life of someone who is engaged in hearing about the greater thief. Greater thief than the sun. Who is that thief? That thief is Krishna. Why? Vrajay prasidham navaneetachauram choragra ganyam purusham namami. In Vrindavan, he is famous as butter thief. But he does not only steal butter, he steals our sins. He steals our heart. He steals our attachments. He steals our material existence. Yes, therefore he is the greater thief. Yes, why? Do you know why? Because see, when the sun rises and the sun sets, it takes the living being one step closer to death, right? You go one step closer to death and what happens after death? Birth, then death, then birth, then death, then birth, then death, birth, death, birth. This cycle goes on, goes on, goes on. Punarapi jananam, punarapi maranam. Again and again, birth, again and again, death. Punarapi jananam, punarapi maranam. Part one, who is engaged in singing, in hearing, in speaking about Krishna, then he doesn't steal life, but he steals the material existence of that person. Our attachments, yes? The sun steals our attachments and brings us one step closer to Krishna. Yes, because for the person who is not engaged in hearing Gita, not speaking Gita, then what? The sun steals the life so that he is engaged in birth, death, old age disease. Birth, death, old age disease. Again, birth, death, old age, disease. But one who always remembers Krishna. How will you remember Krishna? By hearing, by speaking, by worshiping your Jagannati, by playing your Mrudanga, yes? So by doing all of these things, when you remember Krishna, then what does the sun do? It will not take you towards birth, death, old age, birth, death, old age, disease. It will take you closer to Krishna. It will take you back home, back to Godhead. One step closer to Krishna, not one step closer to death. Yes, so reading and hearing is wonderful. But can you guess what comes first, reading or hearing? What should be prioritized, reading or hearing?
Hearing.
Hearing.
Yes, hearing, but why hearing?
Because we can hear it from someone who's learned.
It's easy, it's easy. If you don't know how to read, to just hear and just.
And so we don't get misconceptions.
Yeah.
So you can understand it like from the right point of view.
All of you are correct, that you can understand it from a bona fide person, from a right point of view because you are hearing it from someone who is living it. Yes, when you read it, you will read it according to yourself. But when you will hear it from devotees, those who are experience, experience, experiencing it, right? I am, I don't know why I'm juggling with so many words today. You will hear it from someone who is themselves living it and experiencing it. Then you will actually get to also learn from their character. You will get to learn from their acharan, their way of dealing, their way of implementing. Then you can learn from them much better than what you will understand it by only yourself. Yes, then when hearing and reading put together, then it gives, gives birth to contemplation. You are hearing from sources, you are hearing from devotees. You are reading some books, yes? Are you reading some books? We are reading Bhagavad Gita, yes? I heard that you had read basics of Bhagavad Gita also before. Then I heard that you'd read Science of Self-Realization also before. So all of these books, when we are hearing also and when we are reading also and when put together, then we should contemplate. Chah, what did she say? She said that with every, you know, every sunrise and sunset, one day is gone. So that means if I will always be engaged in Krishna's services, then that means the sun will not sip life force from me, but actually give me life closer to Krishna. That means I should engage in Krishna's services. You're contemplating, contemplating and after contemplating, you're discussing with others. Sahir and Mahir sitting together discussing. Sahir, what will you do? How will you engage in the services of Krishna? And Sahir would say, I will chant four rounds in the morning. Devin will say, I will wake up at six o'clock every day. Then Shre will say, I will not see my phone. Yes, then Arpan will say, I will read fifteen minutes of book before sleeping. So this is how you're discussing with others of what you have contemplated on what you have heard. Yes, you're discussing with others on what you have contemplated on what you have heard or read. And then what will happen? Then bhakti will rise in your heart. Your heart will become cleansed of all the vices. Kam, krud, lob, anger, greed, lust, illusion. And bhakti will rise in your heart, light will come in your heart and bhakti will rise. So when we start hearing about Krishna, especially from the lips of a saint, yes? Then you know who is Chitragupta? I don't know if any one of you know who is Chit, you know Mahir, try guessing.
Oh, the right hand of Yamraj, I think so.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, so who is Yamraj? You will not tell, let others try. Sahir, Devin, Shre, you know who is Yamraj? No, okay, Mahir, you tell them who is Yamraj.
So Yamraj is the one who takes our life, means like from the soul, from our body, who takes our life. The god of death.
So Yamraj is actually the superintendent of hell. You know what is hell? Sahir, hell, Narak, hell, yes? Who is in charge of hell, the king of hell, the superintendent of?
Yamraj.
Yes, Yamraj. And he works according to the jurisdiction of Krishna. Whatever Krishna will say, hey, you work like this. You say, okay, my master, I will do it. So he is appointed by Krishna. Krishna will say, hey, you take his life. So Yamraj, Krishna, Yamraj will say, okay, okay, my boss, I will do it. So whatever Krishna will say, he will work according to that. Yes, so he is a superintendent of death. So when he will see, oh, this person is eating meat, then Chitragupta, the assistant. Who? Yamraj?
Oh, he's, oh, okay.
His assistant. Chitragupta. Chitragupta is the assistant of Yamraj. So when he gets to know that, oh, this person is eating meat, he will open his diary. Okay, this person is eating meat, eh, this person has, eh, this person ate meat. Then, oh, this person is smoking, oh, this person is smoking. So he just takes, record his diaries. Oh, this person has done this sin, written down. Oh, this person has done this offense, written down. But you know, innumerable lifetimes, that record is being made. So many piles of books Chitragupta has made in front of Sahir's name, Mahir's name, Shre's name, Arpan's name. But now, as soon as Sahir plays Tumridanga, as soon as Mahir hears the Gita, Chitragupta is like, my lord, my whole job is gone, my duty is gone. Then he takes the paper and just tears it up. All the books, tears it, tears it, tears it. He says, he is remembering Krishna, he is chanting Krishna, he is hearing about Krishna, he is speaking about Krishna. I'll have to tear all my work. So much effort I had put to make these piles of books over innumerable lifetimes, now what? I'll have to tear them all up. So what happens? There is a no entry sign on the gateway of hell. No entry sign. So where is the entry sign? Your entry goes to Krishna directly, not to hell. Just, this is the potency of remembering Krishna. All sins will be just burned to ashes just by remembering the Lord. See, om apavitra pavitrava. It is written in the Shastra sin. Even if you are externally impure, internally impure, heart is impure, full of desires, full of attachment. Om apavitra pavitrava. Even if you are impure, you will become pure, how? Just by remembering Lord. You will become all pure, inside pure, outside pure, everything pure, puri pure. Just remembering Lord. Yes, so this is the potency of remembering Krishna, hearing Gita, yes? So who will not take up this process? Such an easy process, what do you have to do? Chant, do kirtan, dance, eat, feast, enjoy with devotees, what do we need more? There are so many processes. What was, acha, let me take a test also. What was the process of meditation in Saty yoga? Does anyone remember?
The havans?
No, that is but not of Satya yoga.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Fire sacrifices?
Yes, yaj, haven and yaj.
Yaj, yeah, same.
Yeah, that means fire sacrifices, but it is not of Satya yoga. Acha, wait, tell me the four yogas in sequence first.
Satyug. Satyug.
Brahmug.
Satyug. Dwapar, Satyug.
Up, yeah. Kalug.
Kalug is the last.
Yes, Kalug.
Middle one is the dropper.
It starts from T.
Dwaparug.
Dwaparug does not start with T.
Oh, no, 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 no. Tretaug, right? Tretaug. Eksa Satyug, Tretaug, Dwaparug and Kalug.
Yes, so these are the four. What Sahir repeat them in order?
Satyug, Dwaparug, Treta, no, Satyug, Tretaug, Dwaparug and then Kalug.
Yes, Arpan, repeat them in order.
Uh, Samyug, Tretaug, Dwaparug and Kalug.
Yes, and now Shre, here the next thing carefully, I'll, I'll ask you to repeat that in order. The meditation process for Satyug is meditating on the super soul, Dhyan. When you sit like this, it reacts fine, yes? And then you are concentrating on the super soul with eyes closed for years and years. Sixty thousand years underwater, sixty thousand years on one leg, a hand like this on the mountains. Yes, they are meditating. This is the process of Satyug. Then the process of Tretaug is these, what you're telling, fire sacrifices. And then now guess what is the process of Dwaparug? We've done it in D Y S.
Chanting.
Chanting is this Yugas Dharma, what you're doing now, Kalug Dharma, chanting the holy names.
Deity worship.
Yes, yes, Praveenji, so it is deity worship. Yes? Arsha Vighra Seva, worshiping the deities. Yes, so first is meditating on the super soul, fire sacrifices, deity worship, chanting of the holy names. Shre, can you repeat them in order?
Uh, there is meditating on super soul.
Satyuga.
Fire sacrifice.
Tretaug. Kindly ignore my background, it is just Zoom's function. Yes, yes, Dwaparug, tell Dwaparug.
Uh, deity worship.
Yes, and.
And then chanting.
Chanting of the holy names, perfect. So where was I? Yes, I was telling you that all of these processes involve so many things. When you're doing fire sacrifices, you need a whole, you know, you need a whole area. You need fire, you need Brahmins who can recite the mantras, who can remember the mantras. Yes, you need purity, you need pure ghii. Nowadays, when you ask the youth, where does milk come from? They say dairy. They don't even know that milk comes from cow. Where will pure, where will you get pure milk from? You, in the United States, there is Jersey cow, not even Desi cow, which is there in India. Yes, where will you get pure milk, pure ghii, pure ingredients? You cannot perform fire sacrifices in Kalug. You cannot meditate on the super soul. Now, between the class, many times you will switch off your video, switch on your video, then you will go here, then you go here, then you go up, down, then you will exit, then you will come back, yes? Can you do this for sixty thousand years of, you don't even have a life of sixty thousand, sixty years? Sixty years, six years, six days, six weeks, six months, no, six minutes? That is also very difficult. Right, then deity worship, we need a lot of parafor nelia for that. Yes, so therefore chanting of the holy names is the most prescribed way. Khaite shvite yata tatha namlo deshkal niyam nai sarva sidhi hoy. Mahaprabhu says, take the holy name in washroom. Can you bring your deities in the washroom? Take Jagannaji in the washroom? No, you chant the holy name in washroom. You chant the holy name while eating. You chant the holy name while sleeping. You chant the holy name in any condition. But you cannot do other methods in any condition. So it is so easy, you laugh, chant, dance, such. And through that, actually the great thing is, ki, even if you got this, you know, leverage, that you're chanting, you're dancing and you're doing kirtan, you will, it is like, it is usually seen that acha, what result you will get from meditation is like hundred percent, you will attain hundred percent result. And then when you're given a leverage, chalo, you do this much only. Then it is seen usually that you can attain the result, but not hundred percent, maybe fifty percent. Yes, but do you know the secret? If you can attain the result from meditation up to hundred, then by kirtan and by dancing and by feasting and by eating, prasadam, you will attain the result thousand, thousand vinae, ten thousand, one lakh, one crore, infinity. It is not comparable at any cost. Going back home, back to Godhead, back to Krishna, getting love of Godhead is even more greater than the result you can get from fire sacrifices, deity worship or the meditation on the super soul. So such a great vindication you have got, what does one need more? What one is chanting holy name again? You can unmute and ask Shre.
Uh, which one is the yog that you chant holy names again?
Kalug.
Okay.
See, in Kalug, we are here right now in Kalug. Right now, which yoga is going on? Kalug yoga is going on. And in this yoga, we are chanting the holy names of Lord as the means of our deliverance from this material world, which is like a dash. This material world is like a dash, fill in the blank.
Prison.
Yes, perfect. So this material world is like a prison house. So do you know, everything else will be taken away from you? If you feel good in the association of your mother, your father, your brother, your husband, your wife, your father, your mother, either they will be taken away from you or you will be taken away from them. Eventually, everything in the material world is temporary. It will be taken away, just like we learned the example of a train. Everyone comes together in the train for some time. Hello, my side compartment person, nice meeting you. Oh, I think my station has come, bye bye. So this is the actual story of life. You come together for some time, mother, father, husband, wife. And then when everyone's station come, they have to go. So either you will be taken away or they will go. So if, see, hear it carefully. If you invest all your joy in that relation which is temporary and will be taken away, then what will it give you? Yes?
Unhappiness.
Yes, unhappiness, sadness, anxiety, worry, fear, depression. You're investing all your joy and happiness in that relation which is temporary, which will be taken away from you. But you are eternal, who are you? Tell me, Arpan, who are you?
Uh, the juice, or soul.
Yes, you, are you eternal?
No, not in my body, but the souls.
Yes, so you are your soul, so you are eternal. Yes, Krishna, is Krishna eternal?
Yeah.
So if you are eternal and Krishna is eternal, so if then you, your service to Krishna, will that be eternal or temporary?
Eternal.
Yes, so if you are eternal, Krishna is eternal and your service to him is eternal, then why not invest in that relation which will never die? If we redefine our joy in that relation which increases by time and not decreases by time, which will never be taken away from us and in that relation in which we can be eternally happy. If we invest our joy in that, then what will that give us? Mahir?
Happiness or peace, like?
Everlasting happiness.
Huh?
Everlasting happiness, that happiness.
Everlasting happiness.
Yes?
Bless.
Yes, this will give us bliss. But right now, what is our condition? We are begging joy from others, who are begging joy from others. We are taking our bowls. Please give me happiness by this, by this, by shoes, by clothes, by iPad, by laptop, by you. Please give me happiness and that person is begging happiness from others. So you are begging happiness from others who are begging happiness from others. Who is getting happiness in this process? No one. But if you be happy from someone who is the reservoir of happiness, right now you are asking Sindhu from Bindu. Right now you're asking drop, you're asking oceanic happiness from drops. You're asking everyone, give me happiness equivalent to an ocean. But they have happiness equivalent to a drop. You are asking ocean from a drop. But why not ask ocean from the ocean only? Then only you can get happiness. So we are begging oceanic joy from all the drops around us. But Krishna is actually the reservoir of all happiness. So when we invest in a relation and when you invest in a relation and that person is not fulfilling your desire to enjoy, then what happens? When you're investing in some relationship, When you're investing in some relationship, even with your mother, with your father, with your brother, with your friend, anyone. And when that person is not fulfilling your desire to enjoy. Then you blame that person, tell you this way, because of you, I am unhappy. Then what happened? You break that relation, another relation, you break that marriage, another marriage. You break that friendship, another friendship, you break that partnership, another partnership, but the point is. That the one who has made you actually has stamped it, who has made you? Krishna, you are part and parcel of the supreme personality of Godhead, we have discussed this. A lot of times in the D Y S, I'm not repeating it that we are the eternal servants of Dash. I had given this in three exam also, that we are the eternal servants of our eternal master, we are the part and parcel. Of the supreme personality of Godhead, yes? So, the one who has made you has stamped it, what dukkhalam, dukkhalayam or shashvatam. That this material world is a house, just like you go to a library, it is called a house of books. But this, and when you go to a school, house of learning, yes? Vidyalaya, house of learning. But when you come here in this world, do you know what is the name of this house? Can anyone guess? Dukkhalayam or shashvatam, the name of this house is the house of.
Perseverance of things.
Yes, yes, Devin, yes, the house of suffering, the house of misery. So this is the point, but you can enjoy, I'm not telling that you cannot enjoy only, if you want joy, I can give you joy. But the thing is that joy is not outside. Apple iPad, latest iPhone, yes, branded clothes, they will not give you joy. The joy is not outside, the remote is with you. You have the remote of your joy, did you ever know that? The, the remote is with you, if you perform Bhakti, then not only you will be happy. Everyone around you will be happy, the whole world will be happy. Yes, so chant and be happy, this is the process. Sublime process, very easy, you just have to take it up, yes? Then it is also told in the scriptures that every one of us is experiencing ocean of grief. But is it so? I am not experiencing ocean of grief, maybe this much sometimes my body is very weak. Sometimes some miseries come, sometimes my parents do not allow me to perform Bhakti, some, some grief comes. Sometimes I'm not feeling good, some grief comes, but it is not like an ocean of grief. Is any, any one of us experiencing ocean of grief? Maybe some drops of grief, but not ocean, why is it said so in the scriptures that everyone is experiencing ocean of grief? Are they World Cup is going on, where is the ocean of grief? Yes, Mahir? You like cricket, World Cup is going on, where is ocean of grief? Yes, but Sahir is laughing. Over lifetimes, if we calculate, how many drops of tears we have cried? If, in all the lifetimes, yes, Shre, how many lifetimes have you taken?
A lot.
Yes, a lot, unlimited lifetimes, yes, Sahir, have you ever cried in this lifetime?
Yeah.
Many times. Yes, many times, so if in this lifetime, what, what is your age, Sahir?
Thirteen.
You're thirteen, so in just thirteen years of your lifespan, you've cried several times. What about seventy more years, eighty, ninety more years awaiting you? How many times you will cry in that? And how many lifetimes have you taken and you've cried in that? Now each drop of that tear you start storing, that will make up ocean of grief. That is the ocean of grief. But when you remember Krishna even once, all the oceans have dried up. That is the potency of sincerely remembering Krishna, chanting Krishna's name, hearing Gita. All of those oceans will dry up. Such reservoir of ocean, see, right now we're in the ocean of grief, Krishna takes us out and puts us into the ocean of happiness. This is Krishna. So we are so fortunate, having been introduced to this process, this movement. This holy name, Bhagavat Gita as it is, yes? So we, we should realize this fortune and be very grateful for it to Lord. But tell me, right now we're saying, remember Krishna, remember Krishna, remember Krishna. Mahir, have you seen your great grandfather?
No.
No, then can you remember him?
Oh yeah, in picture, like, we have a picture at home.
Yes, in picture maybe, but you cannot remember him always through that, yes, I am talking about Krishna. You have not seen him directly, you are not staying with him. How will you remember him? Yes, maybe Sahir can remember Devin always because he's staying with him. But how will you remember Krishna? You've not, you cannot remember your grandfather, your great grandfather, your great great grandfather. How you'll remember Krishna if you've not seen him? Can anyone guess?
By contemplating.
Learning.
Yes, by hearing about him. Yes, rasayana katha. So, it is told in the scriptures, there is one beautiful story which comes in the scriptures. Who is Rukmini? Can you guess? Not Mahir, no. Anyone else? Shre, do you know who is Rukmini? Arpan? Devin?
Uh, I don't know. Really?
I told him, but he doesn't want to hear. Krishna's wife.
Devin is, Devin is honest.
Well, a little bit too much.
A little bit too much. Yes, thank you so much, Rukmini is Krishna's first wife. Yes, Pratham Patrani, she is Krishna's first wife. So it comes in the scriptures in Bhagavatam, it is said that Rukmini had not seen Krishna. Yes, be- before marriage, she had not seen Krishna. But from her childhood till her marriage. She was always and always remembering Krishna, not seeing him but remembering him, how come that is possible? She used to hear. Very attentively, each class without switching off the camera. Yes, without yawning. She used to hear the class very attentively, taking down notes. Yes, she used to hear, contemplate and remember Krishna always and always. Yes, Sahir, tell me that one thing that you do or will do to remember Krishna always.
I'll always uh learn about him, I'll always hear about him. And I'll always try to uh, try to like remember what I learned outside of class.
Yes, thank you, even if you invest ten minutes, just after the class. Okay, 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 I've learned these, these, these things. So now I have to sincerely take it up and this is what I will do after the class and then you go to Mahir and then you say, Mahir, see this is, this is, this. What I have learnt in today's class, just ten minutes.
Association is very important.
Yes, when Mahir will share with you and when Sahir will share with Mahir, when both of you will share with each other. Shre, you can share with me. Yes, you can share with me, you can message me, text me. These are my learnings, this is what I've learned, I will share with you. Yes, if you have contact with anyone of them, like Sahir, Mahir, Devin or. Arpan, then you can message them, are you in some relationship or in some family relation or? Friend, I don't know.
Well, Arpan's my cousin and Arpan's, I think, Arpan's mom is friends with. Uh Sahir's mom and dad.
Okay.
Yeah, Arpan, Arpan and Shre are cousins, first cousins.
Oh, okay. Yes, so you can share with Arpan. And Arpan can share with you and Devin is always there with you, you three are always together, so you can share with each other, yes? So this is the best way you can excel, I am also not alone, I cannot progress alone. I have many people around me to whom I share with. Yes, my friends, devotee friends, they are very important. If you want to be a cricketer, whom will you associate with? Tell me, Mahir?
Good players or good coaches, like who plays for many years.
Yes, if you want to be a cricketer, you will not associate with a basketball player, right? Or you will not associate with someone who will say cricket is boring.
No.
Not associate with him, okay. If someone wants to be, if, if someone, acha, tell me, uh Shre, tell me. That if someone will associate a lot with drunkards, what will he become?
Drunkard.
Yes, if, see, you have to choose your association wisely. You will become what, who you will associate with, basic formula, write it everywhere. You will become what you will associate with. You want to be a drunkard, associate with drunkards, you want to be a smoker, associate with smokers, you want to be a cricketer, associate with cricketers. But if you want to be a devotee, associate with devotees, like minded devotees. Yes, so now we left with ten minutes and as I promised you, I'll be sharing some practical tips. Points towards the end, so you can note it down, implement those points, try implementing this, them. Share with me what you've understood. Towards the end, you have to share what you've understood from these practical tips and points that I'll share with you. So, I am not telling you to implement them right now immediately. But they should be in your mind, you know, as you progress, they should be in your mind, okay, this is where I have to reach. This is my benchmark, my goal, this is where I have to reach, okay, I'm not able to do right now. Maybe I'm sleeping two AM, one AM, I'm not able to sleep early, but yes, you should know that I have to sleep early. It is not that I'm not sleeping early, let me only sleep at two AM, I'm not able to do it, I will not do it. I am not able to do it, but I will try to do it, this should be in your mentality. So see, two things are there, sleeping late is one of the worst things you can do to your spiritual life. And accountability in the sadhana card, as I discussed yesterday. Is one of the best things that you can do to your spiritual life. Yes, the two things, remember, sleeping late, waking up late. Is the worst thing that you can do to your spiritual life, that we can do to our spiritual life. And accountability to the sadhana card is one of the best things that we can do. In our special life and I am also struggling, but I'm trying, till now I am struggling. If I'm telling, if I tell you honestly, till now I am struggling, but I'm trying. So what is important for us is to keep trying.
Sure, yeah, I want to share my experience that the single most important thing. That really changed my life for spirituality was waking up early. One single habit that I changed in my life, changed the whole thing uh with me and spirituality. So it's, it's extremely critical to, to wake up early.
So.
What's considered early?
Yes?
What's considered early? Brahma Murat.
Five questions, Shre. What is considered early? Everyone has their own definitions of early, but what is considered early? Do you know what is Brahma Murata? Prabhuji, can you uh explain what is from Brahma Murata, the timing? According to you, I don't know.
Yeah, so, so it's exactly Brahma Murat is the. Uh, the late time is before the sunrise, it's thirty minutes before the sunrise. Uh and then uh, 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 two hours prior to thirty minutes of sunrise, that's my understanding. So say if the sunrise is going to happen at seven, then you, uh, then you subtract from six thirty two hours. So it will be four thirty to six thirty type of thing, so but typically in uh what people follow as Brahma Murat is. A, a time between three to, three to five or three to six uh is the most auspicious time. So any, anytime after three and thirty minutes prior to sunrise.
Yes.
Oh, okay, but what's considered late for sleeping?
Late for sleeping is according to me, I'll tell you my routine, usually I sleep by nine. And what I consider late is post ten, I consider it late night, post ten PM. And ideally, one should wake up, ideally I'm telling you, ta- temple standard I'm telling you, that one wakes up at four. But if you are waking up right now, let's say at eight, I'm, what time do you wake up? Say, six, seven, eight.
Uh, I woke up at like seven thirty today and I went to bed at like ten last night.
Okay, so for example, you're waking up at seven thirty and you want to uh try waking up early. So what you should do is not that you're waking up at seven thirty and next day put an alarm of four AM, no. We don't have to be the rabbit in our spiritual life. Who wins the race? The rabbit or the tortoise?
The turtle.
Yes, so you have to take those steps, baby steps. Yes, firm the steps and move ahead, don't try to be the giant, ah, ah, I will reach the goal. Krishna, I will attain you in ten minutes, no, we don't have to take those giant steps. Take baby steps, small steps, you know, when you will take huge steps, then. You will think in some years, it is burdening to me. You know, waking up at four AM, what is she telling me, you wake up at four, sleep at nine, I am leaving all of this. This mentality will come eventually, so what we have to do is take small steps towards progress. Firm the step, then move, take another step, firm that step, then take another step. You're waking up at seven thirty, try waking up at seven fifteen for one week. When you think, okay, I'm good in seven fifteen, one week, two weeks, three weeks. Then next, then the fourth week you go up to seven AM. For, for three more weeks, or how much ever you feel that you're firm in that. In that step, you, you firm now, then take another step, six forty five. Subtract fifteen minutes, fifteen minutes, fifteen minutes, firm that step, then take another step.
Oh, okay, if I have like, I've been volunteering at the hospital and I have to wake up at like. Sometimes five thirty for that, but I wake up at five thirty for school.
Yes, so acha, you wake up late on the weekends when in, during the week, when it's a school, you wake up at five thirty.
Yeah, I go uh fresh, get ready and then I go uh sit down at a blender.
Okay, 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 so, okay, so that's good if you're waking up early. So you can see if in the morning you could chant your whatever number of rounds that you'd promised. So if you, if you're not able to make out time in the morning, so maybe you can shift fifteen minutes so that you can take out time in the morning for that. So if you if you're not able to make out time in the morning, so maybe you can shift fifteen minutes so that you can take out time in the morning for that. Yes. So similarly for sleeping, fifteen minutes, fifteen minutes, fifteen minutes, fifteen minutes. Yes? Then come to.
If you want to, yeah, if you want to uh put an L R R M for going to bed, don't put an L R R M to to wake up. If you have a L R R M to go to bed, you'll automatically wake up. You don't need an L R R M to wake up.
So what is important is not waking up on time, but sleeping on time. If you sleep on time, then you will wake up on time. But what the problem is that we don't sleep on time, or when we sleep, then we're like, ting, ting, ting. One shot, another shot, one reel, another reel. And it goes on, goes on, goes on, and then you see that, oh my god, ten thirty. I have to wake up early. Try to cut off the phone when you're before sleeping, then you'll be able to sleep. This is the only thing. So you've heard this from your childhood, this one proverb. Early to bed, early to rise makes a man healthy, wealthy, wise. Who does not want to be healthy, wealthy and wise? We all want to be healthy, wealthy, wise. But what is required for being healthy, wealthy, wise, that we don't do. Yes, every one of us wants to be healthy, wealthy, wise. But to be, to be healthy, wealthy, wise, we need to be early to bed and early to rise. Yes, Shre?
Yeah, what Rajesh is gonna say.
So actually the morning time is the golden time, yes, when if your mind is at peace. And it is the best time even according to the scriptures, this time is. Actually the best time when you can cultivate spiritual consciousness. It is not that you cannot do during the whole day, whole day and inch minute you can do. But the best time when there is peace in yourself and there is peace around you. It is the morning time. Yes? So, and there is another thing that I also want to share, is that in today's world. Everyone is very career oriented. What will I become? What do I have to become? But less attention do we give to our character. Yes, what our character is. So today there is no talk, no class, no lesson, no session, nowhere. On any platform, there is any discussion about one's character, career building. Career counseling, career sessions. Character building, character sessions, character counseling, no, no way you'll hear them. So there was a famous proverb that you would also have heard. Yes, but now it is a little absurd, but it is a famous proverb. Have you heard this? If health is lost, something is lost. Hear it carefully if you've not heard. If your health is lost, something is lost. Yes, if your wealth is lost, nothing is lost. But if your character is lost, then everything is lost. Yes? Health is lost, something is lost. Wealth is lost, nothing is lost, you will learn again. But once if your character is lost, remember then everything is lost. But now do you know what is that proverb? In today's Kali Yuga. If health is lost, something is lost. Yes, if wealth is lost, everything is lost. And if your character is lost, nothing is lost. What is lost? Character is the lose way. What is lost? Nothing is lost. Yes, even today's parents tell the children, drink, drink, go to clubs. Go late-nighters, yes? They tell them to lose their character. What will they do? What will they say about the character? And when wealth is lost, bankrupt, gone, end of life. Yes? So do you know in the scriptures, there is discussion of one Manu Maharaj? He was actually the king of the whole world, the ruler of the whole world. The son of Brahma, Manu Maharaj. The king and the ruler of the whole world, the son of Brahma. Anyone can say that where will he marry his daughter? To a king, great king, maybe not even of this world of heaven. He is the king of the whole world. Where will he marry his daughter? To another great king, obviously. But whom did he marry? His daughter Deva Huti too. Kardam Munni, not having any bank balance, no checks. No French hairstyle. No, nothing. He wasn't even a good cricket player. Yes? No, nothing, but what did he have? He had character.
A character.
He was a man of great character. Yes? Character, character, character. What is character? Can you guess, anyone? Sahir, what do you mean by character?
Your personality, like how you are.
Yes, when you say in today's world your personality, you will say, oh, dashing hair. Oh, fair skin.
The ethics and morality that you follow, like for beliefs.
Yes, your core value, your ethics, your morality. Yes, this is your true personality. Yes, no meat eating, no intoxication, no gambling, no illicit sex. Chanting the holy names of the Lord, being obedient for the classes. Yes, hearing attentively, being humble, serving everyone. Being honest. Yes? Being honest, okay, Vrinda has told me to send the sadhana card, I have slept at eleven. Let me write nine. No, being honest, this is character. Yes, so this is like a valuable jewel. And that should be given to us and we should imbibe this in this, this. Uh, duration of your life, in this student life, in these years, you should imbibe this character. Do you know why? If you will become characterless now, you will not become a man of character in the future. What you do now will define your whole life. Keep that in mind. What you will do now will define your whole life. When you put some grooves on a stone, tell me. Again and again, there is a stone, okay, and you're putting grooves, one groove, two groove, then deeper, three, four, five. Again and again, again and again, again and again, on those, uh, you know, on that rock. Will the grooves become deeper or shallower?
Deeper.
Deeper?
Yes, how can you expect that if you will not perform acts of character now? You will be able to do it in your old age. Some people say, haven't you heard? Why are you doing bhakti right now in this youth, wasting all of your time? When you have time in old age, no teeth in the mouth, no strength in the knees. No spine to erect. Yes, all the vitality lost, then do bhakti. When you have nothing to offer to Lord, then do bhakti. But this is actually the perfect time that you can invest in this Krishna consciousness and be a man of character. And what you will do now will actually define your whole life. Do you know? What, chalo tell me, you only tell me, whom you associate with will make up your thoughts. Your, what will your thoughts lead to? What do, what does your thought make up? I have discussed this in one more class, previous class, yes, what will your thought? Yes.
Your actions.
Yes, so what you are associating with is making your thoughts. And whatever your thoughts are, they are making your actions. What will your actions make up? Tell me.
Consequences, better good.
Yes?
Consequences, better good.
Yes, that will. Yes?
Your character is made up by your actions.
Yes. Yes, your perspective, the circumstances, the consequences. But main thing, what your action will lead to is making that habit for you. What you will keep on acting, what you'll keep on practicing, it will be imbibed as your habit. It will become habitual for you. So what you're associating with is making up your. Thoughts. Your thoughts are making up your actions. Your actions are making up your habits. Your habits are making up your. Difficult one, you see. Shall I tell? Behavior. Whatever your habits will be, so will be your behavior eventually over a period of time. And what your behavior will be, that will be your. Character. That will be your character. So what is the beginning point that we all have to be careful of? Tell me.
Association.
Association, yes. So you should be clear, what is your goal of life? Where my train station will lead me to? Yes, what is my goal of life? Getting good marks in my uh first year examination? Being selected in the cricket team, football team? Mahir will think that she is on me now, beating me with her words, yes? What is the goal of your life? Think about this, what is the goal of your life? And if to achieve that goal of your life, you have to wake up early, then do so. If to a- achieve that goal of your life, you have to associate with like-minded people, do so. Do you know nighttime is whose time? The time of ghosts. The time of spirits, thieves, not our time. The time of negativity, the time of rogues, ghosts, spirits. In morning time, that is the time for spirituality. So you have to choose wisely and lead a very regulated life. Right now we're sleeping at eleven, another day twelve, another day eight, another day ten. We have to regulate this life, what time you're sleeping, what time you're waking up. Because you know, right now we live a very unregulated life. But Krishna says in the Gita that if we lead, lead a regulated life. Then we can get happiness. Yes, so and how can you regulate this life is a very easy method is by sending the sadhana card. It is an easy way that you can uh regulate your life. So we will wind up here, giving you this one question to think about and to tell me in the last class. What is your goal of life? Don't tell me in Hava, don't tell me in here, oh, attaining Krishna is my goal of life. Tell me what is practically you feel in your heart, what is your goal of life? Maybe to get away from my anger is my goal of life. Tell me practically what is your goal of life? To to remove the anarthas and the vices in my heart is the goal of life. To chant deeply and experience the love of Godhead is the goal of life. Tell me what you really feel is the goal of your life. Or maybe, or maybe passing in my examination is the goal of life, no worries. Share with me whatever comes in your heart, but practically, not the words and sentences I say and you repeat that. Oh, going back to God, it is my goal of life. No, what you really feel in your heart, you have to tell me. What is your goal of life, okay? In next class we'll discuss from everyone, what is your goal of life? Okay, so I also wanted to ask that I had taken out the. Uh, mark sheet of the quiz that I had taken yesterday, uh, according. Every answer, uh, the corrections and the number, the marks that you've got. So should I share it individually with everyone on WhatsApp? I think that will be better than announcing it in front of everyone, yes? So maybe I can share it, Shre, I I think I have everyone's number, but Shre. Yeah, I don't have your WhatsApp number.
Yeah, it's in there now.
Can you send me Harakrishna, if you have, because. If you can see my number, if you can send me Harakrishna through that, because I see many unknown numbers that I cannot make out which is your number from them.
Okay, a- after this class is finished, also Harakrishna, this is Shre.
Thank you. So Sahir, if I have to contact Sahir, maybe I can send message to Panna Mathaji.
I'm on the WhatsApp.
Okay, then you.
He's in the group.
Now you're a grown up, okay, so then you can. You send me Harakrishna, so I can get your number also. Arpan, maybe you can also send me. I have Mahir and uh Devin's contact number. Arpan, you can send me, if you have your contact or from your mother's phone, you can send me, so I can get your contact also. So I can share the quiz result with you, okay? Sounds good.
That's right, uh, write your name, write your name with Harakrishna, so because now we are three of you, so.
Yes, thank you. So thank you so much, everyone. If you want to share anything, any inputs from today's class. Or something that you didn't like, any feedback, then you can share. Starting with.
Just want to, just want to make sure they are putting their, the the card that they have to give, so we'll ask it next week. Are they filling the report card of what they have taken from Mr. Dusso?
I sent it to you, I mean on the group, group chat.
Okay, so I hope everyone has my number and everyone has the. Uh, way through which they can send me the report, yes? And are you clear with what you have to write in the report? Wake up, sleeping, chanting, hearing, reading, yes? So anyone wants to share anything from today's class, what you learned from the first half, the second half?
I thought that association is very important because um you can also learn from others and uh. If you want qualities that you don't have, but you know someone else has, you can associate with them and see how they are, you can also learn.
Yes, very nice and very important point. Thank you. Arpan?
I learned that so much where you said that association leads to everything else, like everything that comes after it. Like behavior, always to the behavior and character, so it's good to have people around you that. Also have a spiritual life.
Yes, and people of good character, yes. Thank you. Shre?
That sleeping, waking up late is bad for your spiritual life. And that you should try to wake up thirty to two hours of uh sunrise.
Yes, thank you. Devin?
Uh, I learned that progress is best made if you work slowly and incrementally and like overload. And that uh small intervals, since if you try to jump and like make big progress too quickly. You won't stay committed and it'll be hard, I guess for your life, so the best progress is slow progress.
Thank you, yes. Mahir?
Uh, the association and we should have the timetable, like suitable time to sleep and wake up and.
Okay, thank you so much, everyone, for bearing me for this one hour. So I hope you will like, you will implement some points and I hope you liked today's class. Thank you so much for joining and giving me your priceless time. Thank you. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Thank you, we will meet next week. Hare Krishna.